America Krespin. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but today I received an interesting email that I thought I would share with everybody. Apparently last week, the Colorado Governor's Tourism Conference happened in Denver. And during that turn of time, they had a great dinner, they had some great speakers, and at the end of the event, they had the grand finale. And in the grand finale, they were excited to see that there were amazing pictures of Lamar flashed across the screen. Because during that event, they ended up awarding Kay Hager from the Colorado Welcome Center here in Lamar as the the volunteer in tourism person for the year. So I just wanted everybody to congratulate Kay Hager, all the great work that they do. This was an email from Leslie Stagner earlier today, who is the manager of our Welcome Center here in Lamar. So it's a great honor to be recognized that of all the different uh welcome centers in the state of Colorado is one of those volunteers who has worked extra time, made so much good effort and donated their time to our community to really let people know what Colorado and what our Colorado is all about. So I hope you'll join me if you see her, thank her and congratulate her on her big accomplishment. So. In time from that, we had a wonderful weekend with the big events. I know the uh BBB event happened, which is a great event for uh cancer awareness. It was a great walk. There was plenty of people in downtown Lamar. And I know we have a representative here from the Chamber of Commerce. Melanie, I just wanted to say it was a wonderful event for the Oktoberfest. I know you work, you, the chamber worked really hard to have that happen. So thank you for that as well. So with that said, we will move on with the opening of our agenda. We'll start off with the invocation. We have Christina Walker here. Christina?
Let us pray. Lord, we are here in this place to do civic duty and the business of the city of Lamar. Help everyone making decisions to keep the community in mind and help everyone to encourage and continue working together for the greatness of this community, including people like Kay who represent us well. And amen.
Hey, uh Councilwoman Dick is the lead into the pledge.
Yes.
I pledge the of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, the time is now seven twelve P M. We'll start the meeting. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Not online yet.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Krespin.
Here.
Mike Duffy.
Here.
Manuel Thomas.
Here.
Brent Bates.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, there were a few changes to the consent agenda that we needed to make. First off, there was a correction in our minutes. Um, so in the last minutes, we did have a vote for a liquor license and in that it is for the special events permit. And during that, uh Councilman Duffy did vote no, and our minutes did reflect that he's voted yes. So we need to separate that out. So we can vote on that separate with the change. Uh, we do have a check number that needs to be separated out for Gonzalez Unlimited. Check number nine, seven, six, oh, three, and the amount of a hundred and fifty two dollars. And then we also need to separate out the license renewal for A and B liquor. As we have a individual that will be abstaining. So um without those three items, do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda? Make the motion to approve.
On second.
Okay. Here we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Post same sign. Manuel?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the next item is to uh vote on the change of our minutes with the correction to uh to put Mike Duffy as a vote no for the special events permit. Do we have a motion for that? Make a motion for the change of minutes. Be approved?
Second.
Well, motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Post same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
So now we have the separated check. Check number nine, seven, six, oh, three, a hundred and fifty two dollars for Gonzalez Unlimited. I make a motion. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Check number nine, seven, six, oh, three. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of with Councilman Gonzalez abstaining.
Right. Uh, next item is a license renewal for A and B liquor. Uh, eight, oh, four, East Olive Street. Just need a motion on that. Hold on, hold second. Here we have a motion in a second to approve. All those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Eye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of with Councilmember Jenkins abstaining.
Okay, and you're abstaining because your husband works there, right? Okay, just making sure I got that.
Looks like Mike's in there. Sorry, Mike's here.
And Mike did arrive online. Okay. With the consent agenda complete, that moves us to the public comments section. During this audience participation portion, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Or on any item, okay? If you'd like to come up and just state your name.
Yeah.
And address, sorry.
Paul Parker. Eight, ten South Ninth Street.
You go up to this, the thing here, sorry.
Paul Parker, eight, ten, South Ninth Street.
Okay.
Okay, the reason why I'm here is I'm not originally from here. I moved here from North Starwood, Ohio. About three and a half years ago, and for about almost three years now, I've lived at this current address. And during this time, I break no laws. I walk all over this town. My car's been broke down for the longest time because in this economy, it's expensive to fix. So therefore I walk everywhere. In layman's terms, I don't really do much. But I do play guitar. And I like playing guitar. Sometimes in the house, but sometimes when it's really nice, I like to go outside. Now, for two and a half years, I've worked it out with all of my neighbors. I've had zero complaints. I've worked it out with those that did find fault at the times that I was playing, and I worked it out with them. Now, all of a sudden, I got a cop that shows up in my driveway. Memorial Day weekend on Friday at noon. Asked me to turn it down. Now, we're talking about a speaker that's twenty amps. It's about this big, and we're not talking Marshall stacks here. We're not putting on a concert. I don't want to give that impression. It's basically as loud as your car stereo is with the roof cut off, so the noise is going to carry for a little bit. But being that this town is so quiet, the noise does carry, and I'm aware of it. That's why I've worked it out with my neighbors. Okay? Now, after two and a half years, I got this officer shows up at my house and tries to convince me to go to the backyard and play, not my front or side yard. But he has no problems with the noise, just the location of where I'm at in my yard. Without arguing, I compromised and just shut it down for a couple of days. Monday on Memorial Day, I decide about five in the afternoon, there is not a soul in the area. It's a ghost town. So I decided to go out and play. Well, I open my front door. I don't go outside. I just open the front door. Now this man shows up, same officer at my door, telling me that he's getting complaints from inside my house from Main Street. This is theoretically impossible. This is not going to happen, not from inside the home or even outside the home for that matter. There's no way on this earth. That little speaker is going to reach that distance. So I go and have a meeting with our chief. Um, I guess it was determined this officer might have made a mistake, and they put him in another location for a little while, two and a half months. The date, about four days ago, five days ago, they released him from where he was at. And what does he do? He shows right back up at my door again. Okay, now I have an issue with this because I've talked to this gentleman about it. I'm waiting to see what happens. But I'm at the point where this is becoming kind of buried under the mat, and I feel it's going that way. So that's why I'm here today making a stand. If you, if you're going to have kinsinger parties all over town until midnight, two o'clock in the morning sometimes, I don't know what the problem is with me playing my guitar in my yard at a reasonable level that's been okay by everyone within a three block radius, like literally. And I get a lot of compliments too, but that's neither here nor there. It's the dictatorship and the control. Don't come to my house doing this ever again, please.
All right, well, we
I'm serious. I'm, I, I have a right to state freedom of speech.
Yeah, the three minute period that we talked about.
Okay.
When you came up.
Where did the timer, what's the timer at so I can see it?
It's past three. You're already at four.
Oh, that's the ring.
Okay, that's the three once, yeah. So that's why I was
I want this problem solved.
Just wanted to wrap it up, that's fine.
I want, I want this problem solved. I want everybody to have a meeting about this because if, if you can have all of this other noise going on, don't single this guy out because I'm going to start really raving at it.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I haven't looked into it. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council on an item? If you'll just state your name and address.
My name is Michael Raymond Hernandez. Well, Mayor, you know, uh election time's coming up, and I thought I'd bring up a bunch of things that happened to me since I've been back in this town. Born and raised here, retired out of garden seed, like I said. I have a brother that's a doctor, retired. I was a superintendent in Whitey, Colorado, so I've got some credentials. Okay. I did, I'm going to bring this up. I paid for two permits and nobody went and checked my roof on my carport, and I paid for service that never got taken care of. Dachner came through my gate, padlock gate. I talked to you on the phone about, and I thank you that I talked to you on the phone about it. The electric department put out my personal information. To the collection agency, after the judge said, you're not going to hear nothing from it again, Mr. Hernandez. Well, that's one reason I'm over here. I think you guys have pulled the sheet out of a lot of people. A lot of people ain't going to stand up, but I'm going to stand up because I think they're trying to screw us. Bottom line, I'm getting tired of it. And I thought you were going to get tired of being elected, so I thought maybe you just let somebody else come and take it. You know what I mean? And uh there was another guy on the electric, uh, doing the asphalt road. I talked to him. He goes, we're out of money. That's why we're not doing no more asphalt on the streets.
Out of money for the budget.
Yeah.
For the year.
Yeah, so you know, I mean.
For the year budget.
Yeah.
Budget a certain amount every year for.
Now you gotta take a computer to pay poll at the end of the year and make sure you're not in the red. I don't know what's going on, but I, I just hope the best ones can get elected, you know what I mean, for this community and for the children.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Did we finish up all of our paving for the year that we had budgeted?
We got the milling machine um is a
Okay.
We do patching and we do some okay, a little bit left for some of our internal stuff.
But we finished, okay, just checking. Okay, and if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Linda Sturgis, one, oh, one, County Route D, Lamar, Colorado. And I'm here tonight just for some fun stuff. Um, I got a call from Ty Winter. Ty Winter's our state rep, and he's going to be here tomorrow along with Rose Paglisi from five thirty until oh, about eight forty-five at the community building. There'll be a meal served, and then Rose Paglisi and Ty will be speaking on proposition HH, which is a really important proposition that people need to know about. And then we're going to have, hopefully, every candidate will be able to attend. The goal was to have every candidate that's running have about three minutes just to tell about themselves. And then we'll have about thirty minutes that they can just meet and mingle and talk to people that are there. So the, the candidates that have received personal invitation would have been Councilman Brent Bates, Councilman Duffy, Councilwoman Jerry Jenkins, and Councilman Joe Rodriguez. But I'd like to make sure that everybody else, Joe, sorry, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So um I would hope that everybody can come and attend and have a good time and enjoy them. And if you haven't met the state reps, get to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to speak?
Twyla Batterton, and I live at nineteen oh three South Tenth Street. I just wanted to know what you found out about the Walmart.
We'll be discussing that in the report from the clerk.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak along to the council on an item? All right, going once, going twice. We will move on to the next item, which is our city treasurer's report.
Oh, goodness, that's loud. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I have one item on my report this evening. I would like to bring Hussein Huri up. He's the superintendent for Lamar Light and Power, and he's going to present um Lamar Light and Power's budget to you. Um, this is something that our council doesn't vote on. Um, this is going to be for informational purposes only, but I wanted to invite him on the same night that we were having our hearing and reading our ordinances and things for the budget. So um Hussein, whenever you're ready, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The proposed Lamar Utilities Board budget for twenty twenty-four determines the revenue requirements needed from electric retail rates consisting primarily of transmission, distribution, and wind power generation activities. The budget includes total revenue in excess of fifteen point seven million, fourteen point three million from retail electric sales, and the remaining primarily from wind turbine production. The twenty twenty-four budget is proposing total operating expenses of fourteen point two million, which includes nine point three million for power supply. Additional expenditures include one point four million for personnel costs, two million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars for repairs and maintenance, charter appropriation of one million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred seven dollars, which is the full twelve percent of retail sales as allowed by the charter. The charter appropriation will be reduced by three hundred fifty thousand credit transfer from Lamar ARPA settlement as approved by Lamar C V Council. The charter appropriation then becomes nine point, nine point four percent of total retail sales. One million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars in capital outlays, which include hundred thousand contingency funding, four hundred fifty thousand in substation and distribution line work, hundred sixty-five thousand for wind turbine parts, hundred eighty thousand for vehicles, which is only one small bucket truck. Eight hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars for miscellaneous other equipment that includes completion of the advanced metering infrastructures, AMI system, which is smart meters, four KV feeders, protection upgrade, relay protection upgrade, and distribution system transformers. The proposed twenty-four budget reflects cost of maintaining Lamar's wind turbines, electric distribution, substation, and transmission systems. We are continuing our effort in exploring options to improve electric system reliability by maintaining a balance between rates and system improvements. We remain focused on our mission. Lamar Light and Power will continually strive to provide reliable power at competitive rates to all consumers and businesses we serve throughout powers and bin counties. We will provide professional service through our commitment to excellence and work to maintain Lamar and the surrounding area as vital progressive communities. That's an overall summary of our proposed twenty twenty-four budget.
All right, do we have any questions for Hussein? Do you want to add anything, Krista?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I had for this evening.
That's all you have?
Yes.
So we will move on to the city clerk's report. Linda?
Okay, our August sales and use tax collected in September was four hundred thirty thousand, seventy-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, which was up seven point six seven percent for thirty thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents from twenty twenty-two. Our year-to-date collections were three million, nine hundred thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents, which is up five point nine three percent or two hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and eight cents from twenty twenty-two. No one has any questions from that. I'll move on to my next topic.
Do you have any questions on the sales tax revenue report?
I do not.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so update on Walmart modification of premise approval. So um per requested by Ms. Batterton, I reviewed the recording of Walmart's modification of premise hearing. During the hearing, it was stated that they would be utilizing safety caps on their wine bottles. Uh, Mayor Krespin did ask at that time if this would be on all of the bottles, and it was stated, yes. However, in the motion to approve, it did not um state that they were approving contingent on them utilizing the safety caps. Um, so none of the other locations that um were approved through modification or premises um had any type of safety caps that, that were going to be utilized, um nor did anyone bring that up just as a reference. So um at this time, I just, I need to know um what direction we want to proceed with this.
Okay, and we had, I had an opportunity to reach out to uh Marcus from Walmart and uh speak with them as far as the comments that they made and where we're at and what was happening. Do we have a representative from Walmart tonight that would like to speak? So we did verify that it's not a legal requirement to have those, but it is something that he stated he would do. So it would be up to the council on how you want to address that, but I'll let Jessica speak.
I'm Jessica Stonerock. I represent Walmart. Um, so prior before remodel, we were only going to be getting sixteen or sixteen feet and not the whole aisle. So those little caps that Marcus had were enough for that specific location. Um, we have the caps on order even more so we can, if needed. Um, but those caps are generally for loss prevention, not for age restriction.
So they're for theft, not for restrictions, okay?
It was brought down by Home Office that I go by for thirty dollars and up to be wrapped or capped.
Okay. All right. Anybody have questions for Representative Walmart?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Okay, Twyla? Yes.
You have eight twenty-one in order to open the store. What is the difference?
The new law changed with the state of Colorado, any convenience store where they added convenience stores and stores like Safeway and Walmart. They made those, that modification last year. It was on the ballot in last November, and that's why all of these, they did the premise modification last year where they were allowing the alcohol to be sold in Walmart that was above the three point two that was previously there. So that's the difference is that there was a state law that was changed that allowed sale of alcohol in Loaf and Jug, in Walmart, in Safeway and other stores. No.
No, it was beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
But not, it's also included at the theaters as well.
Is it theaters as well? I wasn't sure what was all included. I just knew that there was a, a law that had changed the premises to where they could use it. So. Okay, did you have any other questions? Okay. So for the council, I guess that's what we needed to give Linda direction. It sounds like they are using it for loss prevention. They ordered more for the bottles that were thirty dollars and up. Is that correct? Is that what you were stating as a company policy? But as as far as the law, the state law, we don't have a requirement for that, and we don't require it of any of the other entities that we oversee. So what's the council's suggestions?
Well, if I may elaborate on that, uh, we didn't ask for a requirement on Safeway or any other entity. And I think it would be wrong of us to ask that of Walmart as well.
Okay. Jerry?
I agree with Joe that, you know, if we're not going to do it to the others, then we shouldn't do it to Walmart.
And I concur. Kansas, we're not doing a formal vote, but Mike?
I agree there too.
Mike Bellamy?
Concur.
Can't hear you.
I concur.
Somebody, I concur. Okay.
They sent me turn it down, ah.
They turned it down, but you're good now. Go ahead, Mike.
I feel the same.
Okay, Manuel?
Yep, as long as you're in the, within the law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. None of the liquor stores have their doors locked to let people in. Kids can run in there and grab a bottle. It's, again, all about education.
Okay. All right, so um I think that answers the question for Walmart. Does that I, I know you had asked us to look into that. I wanted to make sure we went through it and discussed it. Yes, Galen?
To, can they volunteer to put all those caps that put into the gap? And if they, if they volunteered and and why are we allowing them to remain on that promise?
It wasn't that doesn't sound like it was part of their application. They were simply looking for modification of the premises when they applied. Right, so they had, there was a conversation, it sounded like, at that time regarding them putting caps on their alcohol products, which sounds like that occurred at least to a certain cost limit for them.
Yeah.
But it wasn't for all alcoholic purpose alcoholic beverages.
So that's why we went back to double check on the video, or what Linda had double checked on the video, was, was it contingent? Was their application contingent on having those caps on place? And the application wasn't contingent on it. They said that they were going to be doing, putting caps on. And I asked, are you putting it on all of them? And they said, yes, the individual did. So that was the question of the council. Do you want to hold them to their voluntary commitment or not? And that's what I was asking the council, basically.
And, and if I can add, I, I know I don't remember much, but I remember Mar- uh Marcus actually volunteering that that was going to happen from a loss prevention standpoint.
But you said you did order them in. It's just it'll be on bottles that are thirty dollars or more, not on every single bottle. And that's, that's where the hang up is that Marcus said, stated that he would be putting it on all the bottles. He didn't say all thirty and above or but of course, like I said, it's not contingent. It wasn't contingent on it. We're not requiring it of other entities. So we would be setting a precedence for every entity that have to make that investment, which if you don't have, if somebody like A and B Liquor does not have that technology, we'd be looking at a very large investment for that, for them. So.
You can't trust what they say. But also they try and I hate to sound suspicious, but
Yeah.
If they, you know, if they're going to, they're going to do that, they need to be held to that. Otherwise, I can say anything I want to you guys, and then I can go out and do whatever I want. I'm going to
Well, if I can add, I think we need
Okay, hold on a second.
We need to be very careful in this area.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this before I close the floor so we can
Would you like to go? Would you like?
Yeah, so. I, I think what, what Jessica just stated here was the fact that they were initially, it was like a small section, and then they remodel plans came through to where that was expanded. And I think that's the fact that more security caps are being ordered. You know, why they didn't order those ahead of time, that's, you know, that's neither here nor there, but the fact you stated they're on order and it's your uh, it's the corporate decision to do this, and I'm assuming this is all Walmarts throughout Colorado.
Okay, well, we heard the audience. We allowed the opportunity for everybody to speak and give counsel advice to pursue. I've asked the council one time, so after everybody has spoken, and we have the opportunity to hear what Galen had to say, I'll ask one more time. So Joe, what would you like? Do you feel the same way? Do you want to modify that? What would you like to do?
Uh, I, I do. I feel the same way. I think, uh, yes, you know, like Galen is uh bringing some very important information forth, but at the same moment, what uh are we going to do with our others? And I think we would uh, it would uh require quite a bit. So I still feel like we can move forward in the direction that we spoke of earlier.
Did you read?
I feel the same way.
Mike?
I agree.
Mike?
I agree wholeheartedly, and I don't feel like that this was something that uh persuaded my vote to uh do their liquor license at all.
Mike, Manuel?
I have no further comments.
No further comments on it.
Right.
Um, as stated, I think that requiring the mom and pop liquor stores, if you will, in our community to take that investment is a much taller task for them to do than places like Walmart, Safeway, Loaf and Jug. My only suggestion would be if you would like that change, you could always lobby the corporate offices or your state legislation. And my opinion remains the same. And my opinion remains the same.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to. Relook at it after everybody had the opportunity to give us input, so we've done that. So with that, you have your direction moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Um I have one last thing. It's just a brief update on the election as a courtesy reminder to all of the candidates. Next week is the first due date for all candidates to turn in their first campaign finance paperwork. It's due by the seventeenth. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, with that said, we have next item, which is the city administrator.
All right, coffee with Rob. I'm going to start uh as the weather gets a little cooler. I'm going to start staying i- in one position a little bit more, so we're going to do. Um the rest of the uh on eighteenth to twenty fifth of October, we'll do it at the TA Center. And it's right next to Dunkin' Donuts, so I will still throw in a donut. You come see me for coffee, I'll buy you a donut. Airs guys too. Uh I'm going to combine two uh items here. One is my projects and our project, our biggest project, of course, is our. Um comprehensive plan. And uh I'm going to let the miss, I'll let our airs guys come give you a really brief update sort of. Recap and a little bit of information he wants to pass out here today, so I'll give him a couple of minutes to come talk to you. Just to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh thank you, Mr. Sayden Andrew for allowing me some time, couple of minutes. So we do have a little presentation here. Um if you're a slide counter, I think there's like twelve slides, so. I know I like to know how many slides are up, so. Looks like it's opening. Um but really where we're at is we just started kicking off the city's comprehensive plan process. Um we really just got going this this trip out here and so really want to thank council staff and also the residents from Lamar. And welcoming us here. Uh we've had a lot of great conversations, met a lot of great individuals, um. You just can't click through them like that? Okay, that works too. Um so my name is Josh Alhava. I am a project manager and our Western Planning Services Supervisor for Airs Associates. And my colleague with me is Mark Christianson. And some of you may have seen him in past trips out here as we're also working on some brownfield work for some revitalization of properties here in the city. And our firm, we just work on the study side things. We aren't actual developers or builders or anything like that, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Um next slide please, thank you. So just a quick overview of what the comprehensive plan is, and you can click through these, I think, like five or so. Um but really, the comprehensive plan is the community's vision document. It establishes the goals, what the community wants to be in five to ten years, and the reason I say five to ten years is. That's a manageable chunk of time. It's a good way to establish implementation steps, action steps that are achievable. As something that you can work towards and then also continue to refine the plan, because the plan should be. A document that's a living document, something that you can evolve and change over time. Um it also is going to help the day-to-day operations of staff. No worries, you can change, okay? Um and help inform their decisions, because again, the comprehensive plan, think of it as kind of the upper umbrella. Of kind of guidance documents. And then within that, you get into council strategic planning. You get into capital improvement plan. And all the other studies and steps that kind of make up what a city does. And the efforts you take help serve your residents. Next slide, please. So what we did, kind of get going, was create a brand for the Lamar Comprehensive Plan. And we are looking at this brand called Crossroads Horizon. And we have a great little narrative here. It's also on this board, which I'll kind of show council. Um this is the board that we had out during Oktoberfest. And we're also going to keep it up here with the city, and I believe it's going to be distributed at a couple of different locations and up invisible, so the public can. Continue to get informed on what the comprehensive plan is and ways to get involved, because this is a multi-month process. Next slide, please. Go ahead and click through these. So we will be working on a number of additional and value-add elements, because a comprehensive plan. Again, in that five to ten year timeframe, it should be a workbook style and getting stuff done, and that's what we believe in. We've worked in the public sector as public sector planners and professionals, and. We always had the idea that you get a big plan, it sits on a shelf and nothing gets done, so. That's kind of our approach to comprehensive planning and all of our efforts, so we'll be completing a housing assessment. And this will be more of a kind of a a white paper-based assessment to really give you the facts, the numbers and the details you need to make informed decisions. We'll also be working on a transportation plan that will look at the roadway infrastructure. I believe there's also a great study being done by CDOT, so we'll incorporate some of those elements in there. As well as where are there gaps in the network, and that can be pedestrian network as well. We've heard a lot of. Uh feedback from residents regarding the pedestrian and sidewalk systems and where there could be opportunities, so. As we get into that plan, starting in early twenty twenty four, there'll be more engagement, more opportunities, more drawing on maps and. Coloring and all that fun stuff to really get to the core of Wesle. We'll also be doing a zoning subdivision regulation on it, so as the comprehensive plan gets going, we got the vision and goals. We dive into, now how do you make that happen? How do you support the businesses or guide development that you want to see here in the city? Uh three mile plan is a Colorado revised statute requirement. Um the two thousand and four comprehensive plan for Lamar. Really put a big emphasis on this three mile plan, you know, showing growth way out, three miles in all directions from Lamar. Um that's not always usable or practical for most communities, but it's required, so. We'll complete the the high-level element of three mile plan, but really focus it in on what's called the cooperative planning area. And that's the area right around the edges of the community where you immediately about the county and large property. So that way, there's some relationship building and some coordination efforts there, and that's what the cooperative planning area, and I think there's one more. Enter government agreement, so we'll help facilitate those discussions between the city and county. So that way you have mutual understanding working for it. Next slide, please. This is a quick kind of process timeline and. You know, we don't have this here, but we will be developing a project website against since we just kicked off the effort. That's kind of that next piece is a project website, and there'll be a link housed on the city's website. And then, as I'll mention a little bit, there'll be postcards that go out to households, but. Generally, the project is starting now and they'll continue all the way to about that third quarter of twenty twenty four. So kind of been that nine-month timeframe, taking off a little time around the holidays, because no one really wants to be bothered too much, you know, working on the holiday time. Next slide, please. There's some slides from just this past Saturday, so had a lot of great engagement with residents. Lot of great feedback, connected with about two hundred, two hundred and twenty residents and households, which was fantastic. We heard a lot of just general discussions, conversations, and then a lot of people got involved with sticky notes, putting up what their vision and values are for the community, and that's really what. Establishes the base of the comprehensive plan and the guiding documents as you move forward. Uh we also had a fun map exercise where people are able to put pins up on areas that they love, areas they want to see improvement. And then, you know, fun photos with a lot of free residents cross the board. Please. And one of those questions was my favorite thing about Lamar and. Council members, as you know, we did a little work session here before, and I had you fill out some of those same questions. And I bet you can pick up some of the same elements here that you all said. That the residents said, that the stakeholders said, so you're starting to see the synergy between shared interests. And shared values for the community, which is fantastic to see. Um again, this is just start. We'll continue to get public feedback. Pull it all together, and then the goal is in early twenty twenty four, come back for a big open house. Present the findings, what, where we're at, what we're seeing, adjust the, you know, dials a little bit here and there, and then come up with an implementation strategy. Next slide, please. In the same vein, what are some things to improve on Lamar? It's hard to do a word cloud, because people like to write sentences about this, and I didn't want to summarize or cut out anyone's great ideas, so. See things kind of grouped into housing. New housing options, senior housing, I think we hear a lot of that, and senior housing also means retirement housing. Allows people to move up, creates new housing surplus for others. Uh parks and recreation, a lot of different opportunities there, more with community events and activities. The idea of an event center and enclosed space to have concerts and activities all year round. Uh business, economic areas, daycare, medical facilities, primary employers. Airport commercial area and of course the truck bypass, which has been, I think, discussed for a long time and. Just so residents know, bypasses are a lot of work, especially when you work with CDOT, so. There's only so much control at the local level, it can actually get that done at the end of the day. Um and then just general cleanup, you know, property cleanup. Viewification of the community, a lot of efforts are going on downtown now, and it's just, how do you keep that energy going? Because it does take a while, does take. Next slide, please. So opportunities again evolve, so again, we have this listed on the board here. It'll be available on the website, so. First one is the project website, staying up to date, kind of seeing what's going on. And again, those links and all that detail will be shared on the city's website. I think it'll probably be posted on social media and some other areas for the city and residents. We're pushing out a community-wide survey, probably in that early December timeframe, just because that's when everyone's starting to get home, hang out around the holidays. And it's going to be a postcard that has a link to the project webpage as well as a survey. To really ask residents more questions about what they value about Lamar, what they love, what they want to see improved. So again, we can create that base that we really need. Uh we'll also be doing the community open houses, I mentioned, in early twenty twenty four, coming back, sharing all the information. And then from there, that's when we start to get into the plan development stage of the conference. And in the meantime, probably in the next few weeks, right this month. Will be, there'll be solicitations out, probably through city website and social media and publications. Uh for what we're calling the Pathfinder Committee, instead of your instinctful steering committee all the time. It's a Pathfinder Committee, kind of goes with the branding. Uh for interested residents that want to really be involved along the way in terms of reviewing some of the plan elements and discussing. You know, some of those hot topic areas, and so that'll be something that, you know, unfortunately, we can't include everyone, that's why we do the open houses and everything, but trying to get kind of a core group that can really just kind of. Be that back check along the way. And then, of course, a navigator, just youth committee, and really getting the youth involved. We want to make sure that this plan has. Elements that relate to our younger generations, so that way they're informing some implementation and action steps for you all and for staff. It's like. And that is the last slide. Thank you, Anne Marie, for your wonderful pose there at the end. Um and happy answering questions, although I know. A lot of you, we discussed some things earlier, so I'll kind of step off to the side unless Rob has anything else for me.
Oh, good job. I'm glad you enjoyed the tavern and all the amenities here in the city. And I can't wait to see you again, so thanks for coming down. I know you've got a little more work to do tomorrow, but. Yes. Thanks for coming down, guys.
Yeah, thirteen oh one tavern, fantastic.
The only thing I'd like to add, and for those that are watching or those that end up viewing this after the fact, is that. This is huge. I mean, we hear so mu- so many times over the last six months, I've heard. We don't, we need more community engagement. We need to hear what the people want. You need to listen to what the people want. This is a ten-year plan to, for the community to tell us what you want. And it's going to depend on what you do, so if you're not engaged, if you're not getting involved, if you're not giving us your opinions. It's very hard for us to listen to what you're saying, so it's, I I can't encourage them enough. For our community to to look for these uh gentlemen when they're in the community, when they're in advance. When you receive that postcard, please fill it out and send it in, so that way we can get everybody's responses, because this will give us a direction moving forward. Uh for future councils to utilize a template that this is what the people want, so.
And if I can, Mayor, one question did come up during our Oktoberfest. Hey, I've been getting texts about taking a survey. That is not us. We do not reach you through your personal phone. We don't document any personal information. The only thing that comes to you is a postcard to a mailing address. Based on the assessor records, and when you complete a survey, there's no personal information, except are you a resident of Lamar? Age, you know, some of those basic demographics, but nothing about your address, phone number. Or social security number, credit card number and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that that's clear and residents know it is anonymous. There's any bad language, you know, like cash filter it for the kids, but other than that, it is your plan, and that's how we want to treat you, your feedback to inform.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss.
All right, one more um event. And that's Moonlight Madness, October twenty sixth, uh six P M, so. That is the last one I had, and if you guys had any questions about things going on in city, I know Ms. Jenkins will have one for me.
No, we don't.
Oh, wow.
All right. Any questions for the administration before we move on?
I don't have any.
Okay, now, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, we do have an item?
Um she, I got it, uh the Moonlight Madness starts at five instead of six. I've got six on my, so I wanted to correct myself there.
Okay.
Hmm.
Moonlight Madness starts at five P M. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Of course, every year we work on our annual budget. Oh, reports and correspondence, I got to do that first. Give our council members the opportunity to talk about what they've been doing as liaisons or as uh board members. Joe?
Um I've got a short one with the golf course. They just wrapped up their uh two-shot golf tournament. They had over seventy-six teams included in that. There were seventy men's teams and six women's teams. That was a three-day event. They had a really good turnout. There were several people from several states.
Hmm.
And they uh, when you had a chance to visit with them, they all said the same thing about the tavern and the local uh areas to stay. They really enjoyed Lamar. It was a great place. It was nice to know that we had several people from several states come to golf. Um Saturday night was a huge turnout for their uh their dinner. I believe the the place was packed. Um and they wrapped things up on Sunday. Of course, my team didn't win, but we had a lot of fun. Uh and it was a great time. It really was. And uh the talk is that people would like to see a lot more of those things take place here in Lamar. They loved it, great place. And the next meeting's going to be taken tomorrow at five thirty will be the next board meeting.
Great. Well, we have our new events planner. Maybe we can work with her to get some of that out, new more events.
Yes.
Mike first, Mike Bellamy?
Yes, sir, I have something. Uh attended a senior board meeting today before I left town. Um they have rentals still plenty available. If you'd like to rent the senior center hall area. You can contact Sherry Settles, seven one nine, six nine one, one four eight four. To make arrangements for that. Commodities will be ready for distribution tomorrow morning. Um commodity day is the Tuesday following the second Monday. So the truck comes in on Monday to get it all unpacked and then they distribute it on the next Tuesday. Um there's, if you'd like to sign up, if you're a senior and you'd like to sign up for a specific box to be held for you as registered. You can do that there. It's real simple. Other than that, uh regular commodities are first come, first served. And the next commodities day will be November the fourteenth. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jerry G?
Um the Public Safety Board wasn't able to meet the last few months, and I'm not sure, are we going to meet this month? Kyle, Rob. And I know it's been due to, I've had emergencies and I'm not sure about the other ladies. They had stuff come up also. So as soon as we get that together, we'll get back with you guys.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's all.
All right, um Mike?
Uh two things real quick. I know uh I mentioned last meeting, airport board was supposed to meet. But the same situation as Councilman Jenkins just said. Due to lack of quorum, so hopefully this next week or this next month, excuse me. Uh we will be meeting there, and then the other thing is later on in the agenda, we'll have Bev Haggard. Talk to us about the Porta Plains uh conference that was down in Eagle Pass, Texas. Yes, okay, that's it.
I've got to report.
None. Okay, um I don't have anything to report either. Uh there was the senior center. Uh was asked if they could utilize if the um. Sorry, give me one second here to rearrange my thoughts. Uh I was contacted by the public health. Um asking if they could utilize the senior center on October the twentieth for their drive-through flu shot clinic. So if you are in need of a flu shot on October the twentieth, they will be set up in the parking lot in front of the senior center. To offer flu shots to the public, so if you are in need of one, please uh attend on the October the twentieth date. Uh aside from that, it's, I don't have anything else. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, so we have uh every year we do our twenty-two, our annual budget. And then part of our annual budget is to hold a public hearing. For the ability for the community to speak to us about whether or not they're for or against, need to make modifications. Um so we'll start off. Um, so we'll start off by entering into the public hearing.
Make a motion, enter into public hearing.
A motion in a second to enter into the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye. Opposing sign. Mike, you say I? Okay.
Yes, big Rob?
All right, so that will interest into the public hearing. We'll start off with the proof of publication.
Uh, yes, the notification was published and uh for the public hearing was published in then uh September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three edition of the Lamar Ledger and posted on the city complex at the front entrance. Um, copies of the proposed budgets have been available for public inspection in the city clerk's office um beginning on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Okay. Do you have any other opening remarks that you'd like to add?
Um, so the budget that is before uh that was presented for public review had uh just two, a few minor changes um that we had discussed in our work session, our last budget work session. Um, one of the changes was the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was put in as an expense, which was different from your draft copy. Um, and then there was just some minor formula, checking formulas and, and things like that. So um, it's basically the, you know, the same budget with adding that three fifty back in as an expense. So, um, that is the only change made.
That three hundred and fifty thousand, that's the ARPA money right there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The city council have any questions or comments?
I have none.
Gary?
Yeah. Mike, done. Done.
Mike? Okay. Moving out, we'll uh go to open the floor. Is there anybody in favor or opposed to the budget uh for twenty twenty four as presented?
One question.
Yes. Could you, I'm sorry, could you come up because of the record since we're in a public hearing? That's okay. We just need you to state your name and address for the record, since it is a public hearing.
I'm sorry, Belinda Sturgis, one oh one County Road, G Lamar, Colorado. And thank you. I, I stopped by and she was so helpful to go over everything. The only one question I think I had, and I think she's working on his bids for the I think it was four hundred and fifty thou, four hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for computer software or something like that.
Yeah, we're still in the process of gathering information on that. I don't know what the cost will be right.
Yeah, and that's a software improvement. I would just encourage you to get multiple bids. That's the only thing I would encourage on that.
Part of our requirement.
Because that's a, that's a, that's a healthy number.
Well, I, I don't think it's gonna be anything close to that, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, anyone else who would like to speak to the council in favor or against the twenty twenty four budget? Seeing none? Council, do we have any comments from the council after the speaking?
Make a motion to exit public hearing.
Second, second. Have a motion in a second to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. All right, so we really don't have an action. We're gonna wait for the resolution or.
Uh, we'll have an ordinance later on in the meeting. It's under the ordinance. We'll read the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you to the council for that. Moving on to the item number two, we have a porch to planes update from Beverly Haggard. Beverly?
Okay, I attended the Porsche Plate Daniel Conference in Eagle Pass, Texas. Um, on the twelfth and thirteenth and fourteenth of September, there were a hundred and sixty five attendees. There were thirty speakers over a day and a half and uh about thirty sponsors. And our sponsors make it popular up po- possible so that uh we don't have to pay a lot for us attending. Board members don't have to pay to attend the conference just our way there and our rooms and everything, but that being said, uh, the comprehensive plan, instead of a bypass, please let them, I'm not, I'll talk to them about saying alternate trucking. We're still trying to get that, that out. What we're working on now, and we had lots of speakers from Mexico from, um, we even had one from Alberta. And it's, it was the ports. Everybody thinks the seaports is the only ports. No, there's three land ports on the ports to plains. There's Eagle Pass, there's Laredo and um Del Rio. And they all three are expanding. So if they're all three expanding, what does that mean? There's gonna be more truck, truck traffic coming right through here. That's why we need to keep on future interstate. Our governor appointed five new transportation district people that knew nothing, that have never been in the transportation business before. So we've got to educate them to what is out in this area. I keep telling people, if you take a third of the truck traffic off of I twenty five and a third of the truck traffic off of I thirty five and put it on I twenty five, I mean, I twenty seven, which this would be I twenty seven, because Texas now has it named as I twenty seven. We got it designated and also got it named as I twenty seven. Future Interstate I twenty seven, which just expands the, there's already an I twenty seven, which goes from Amarillo to to Lubbock and right back to Lubbock, to Amarillo. But this is gonna expand it and hopefully get the three, the two hun, the twenty three thousand, twenty three hundred miles, all of this is. But if we got all that, just think of the commerce that we could bring to this area, even if you just stated a future interstate and get the signs up stating that it's gonna be a future interstate. And if the ports are expanding, all ports are expanding by three fourths. Most of them are by five to seven lanes. That just, I mean, that's gonna get their truck traffic in faster. I just got an email this afternoon from Joe Kylie, and let me, I don't want to misstate anything. The five, the top five exports to Texas from Colorado to Texas are mixed freight, meat and seafood, machinery, motorized vehicles, and then electronic. But just the meat and seafood alone are five hundred and ninety six million dollars from Colorado. That's just to Texas. Then the exports to Mexico, motorized vehicles are one mi, one billion six hundred and twenty six million dollars a year. Mixed freight is one billion, four hundred and eighteen million. Machinery is four hundred and fifty seven million. Coal tech to Mexico is twenty one, two hundred and eleven million. And other food stuff is a hundred and ninety million. And that's, you know, we just as well be getting some of those businesses down here. And that's why we need to get a future interstate, I mean, get a designation for future interstate. We're trying, right? Lauren, our president is, his next move is to try to get Oklahoma. There's very little time, you know. Oklahoma said if Lamar, if Colorado was on, they would do it. Well, he's gonna try to get them first. Sherry Huddleston, who is our lobbyist with uh, Hen Scarborough in Texas, is willing to come up because Texas only meets legislature only meets every other year. And so on the off year, she would, if we need any help at all at the state legislature. That's why tomorrow night we all need to be at that meeting and meet our legislatures and talk to them and sh- tell them how important transportation is to our area.
The only question I had was the last time you came to visit, we had discussed about getting a letter and having the council do a resolution, but we never received any kind of.
And, and Joe has, and Joe, I did not, Joe didn't get back with me. And Lauren didn't either. But then we talked down there and they said that the ti, the reason it was, was because the time wasn't right because the governor was going to appoint these five transportation uh district leaders and we were wanting to s- to know who they were. And Joe is gonna get back to me and I'll, I'll get with him because he sent this email out. I will get with him and let you know when he gets the letter and Lauren, and Lauren is going once to come up and talk to all the cities in, along the corridor in Colorado. So he's gonna try to get that done in two thousand and twenty four.
Okay, well, it'd be good to get that letter for the council.
Yeah, for the council to sign it.
Yeah, we can sign a resolution and.
Yes, get it all up and get it to the right people and what, that's why he said we wanted to wait until the new transportation district district commissioners were appointed.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
That's all.
If, uh, if I might add, I know I got that same email that you just read from. If any of council is interested, uh, my fellow councilman is interested in reading that email, I'll pass it on. It's.
It's got some really, yeah, it's got, I, I mean, that, that's just the Mexico, Mexico and the Texas. That's not counting the Wyoming, the, the Canada and everything else. Yeah, Joe's really got some really good information in that email.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is application for the victim's assistance and law enforcement bail grant for twenty twenty four initiated by Miller.
Good evening. Um, this is our annual grant that we applied through the district attorney's office. We're asking for twenty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars this year. Um, this helps fund the position for the bill coordinator and also with some of the expenses to get letters out to our victims. Um, they also included is uh her attending the COVA conference, which is held up in the mountains every year. She just got back um, last week. So that's what we're asking for. This year there is no match. I'm just asking for us to be allowed to apply for the grant and for the mayor to sign the document.
Okay. We would just need a motion unless there's more discussion?
So moved.
Okay, just to verify, the motion is as recommended. Is that correct?
Yes.
To authorize the Lamar Police Department to apply for the bail grant and allow the mayor to sign. Is that correct in the second as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
It's go.
Next item on the agenda is contract with Purple Wave for an online city auction. This was initiated by Kristen Schwartz, our city treasurer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we are planning to hold another annual um auction of our um assets that were ready to dispose of. Um, we have been contracting with Purple Wave for the last two years. Um, it's been a good experience. Um, we've had very good sales on our um items that we've sold. So I'm just asking um for council to approve the contract with Purple Wave. This costs the city zero dollars. They charge us nothing. Um, they come down, take pictures of our items, write descriptions, um, do flyers, put out advertising into our local papers, um, give us advertising for our sites and um it is at no cost to the city of Lamar. Um, so I'm just asking Lance has reviewed um the contract and had no issues with it. Um, so I'm just asking for council's approval on the contract that we might proceed. This would be an auction that would close on October thirty first.
And just so the council knows, Kristen and I had a long conversation. Um, there are other auction providers out there like Big Iron. Um, but they do not do the smaller products like we are offering in this auction. And they would offer, or they also charge a fee upfront. Um, whereas Purple Wave is the only one that does it online, does it at zero expense and then does the smaller items as well as the larger items. So um, when she did her due diligence, she was comparing the different options. I just wanted to throw that out there. So it's council's pleasure. Make a motion to approve the contract, Purple Wave, let Mayor sign. You have a motion in a second to approve contract, Purple Wave, and allow the mayor to sign. Any final questions?
Kristen, do you have the items that are currently gonna go to Purple Wave?
I sure do. I can email that out to you. And then they should have, yep, and then they should have them online upon this approval of the contract. They should be online by Friday. Um, so we'll start getting out that information. We had to wait till the contract was approved.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
All right. Oppose same.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item is the contract with the lower Arkansas Valley Area on Aging, A- Area Agency on Aging. Uh, this is initiated by Kristen and Rob.
Uh, yes, so uh, per council's um permission, we applied for a grant through the lower Arkansas Valley Area Agency on Aging um, to assist with, to offset the costs for the Lamar Senior Center and Resource Center. Um, we were awarded um a grant in the amount of twenty five thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars to help offset operating costs. Um, and it requires a ten percent match from the city, um, which would be an amount of two thousand, eight hundred and forty four. Um, this is a grant for the state fiscal year twenty uh twenty four, which covers July one, twenty twenty three to June thirty, twenty twenty four. So I'm just asking um that council approve the contract with the lower Arkansas Valley Area Agency on Aging. Um, Lance has reviewed um this as well. Um, I believe, didn't have any issues, right?
I haven't.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, so I guess I would request in your motions that um if you uh are so led to um, approve um contingent on the city attorney's approval of the contract.
So we would need to approve, a motion to approve contract with lava and allow the mayor to sign the contract in the required attachments pending our city attorney review. Do we have a motion for that?
So, exactly what you said.
Okay, second. Have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions? Or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Oppose same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an agreement to trade properties between Lamar, the city of Lamar and Peter Page. Um, this item is one that we've been discussing as a council. It is for some residential property that the city has been considering doing a trade for frontage property on a highway. Um, our intent was to speak with Peter Page about doing an agreement where he would where he is willing to commit to building homes um along with this trade. However, uh, this was a first draft. We haven't had the chance to go back and forth with multiple drafts. Um, so it shouldn't have been put on as the first draft. Peter Page is still reviewing it and so is our attorney. We may have some questions in the mu- middle, so it actually is not ready for a final decision tonight, but it would be good to check with the council, see if you have any questions while it's on the agenda. See if you have any questions and see if you're good with proceeding and giving direction to proceed. So I'll open it up for discussions on this agreement.
Well, I had to, I always presented, but I mean, I was fine with our conversations and what I've got here, and I'm happy with what I see as long as Lance is okay with what we've got down here.
Same, I see everything okay.
Okay. Anybody else questions or concerns?
It's, yeah.
So this was, the intent was to um trade this real residential property for commercial property in the intent of adding more new homes within the city of Lamar. It would be within a ten year timeframe to give them time to build. Um, and we still have a lot of details to work out before we bring back the final contract. So if we get to a point where we bring back the final contract. So.
So do we need a motion to table it?
Yeah, yes, please.
I make a motion to table it?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to table it. All those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Oppose same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is agreement providing for ambulance and emergency medical services in Prowers County, Colorado. Uh, we had a work session with the, a joint work session with the county commissioners. And this is a topic that comes up once a year. Um, the city of Lamar has our own ambulance service. The county does not. So a few years ago, we began offering this service to the county at a fee. We've negotiated at a fee. At a fee, we've negotiated out of fee cost. And over the last few years, this year we did have an increase in the fee just because of the increase in inflation and inflationary costs. The county commissioners reviewed it, we have been back and forth on this agreement and this is the final irradiation. So we can, um we would just need to get approval from the council. It is for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the year between January the first of twenty twenty-four to December the thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And it will provide, it will allow the city of Lamar to provide ambulance services to all of Prowers County. With the exception of Holly, their ambulance district that they cover on their own, so do we have any questions from the council?
I don't have any, Lance has reviewed it.
Yeah, this is after, so obviously we, this agreement has been in place for a while, this one's a little different because this is just a one-year agreement. The parties have like an obligation to at least attempt to good faith pre-negotiation uh prior to August thirty-first. Of twenty-four, otherwise it's it's just a a one-year IGA agreement for the services as the mayor indicated.
Okay. Mike, did you have anything? Questions?
No, sir, I'm good, hundred percent.
Okay. All right, then uh we would just need to approve the agreement as presented, make a motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same side.
Unanimous in favor, Al?
Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is an amendment to the purchase um. Sales agreement with KB Widdham Propco LLC. Um, of course, many of you already know that we've been working with Arby's uh or working on an Arby's for many years. This would be my, it was like two weeks after I became mayor in two thousand nineteen, I began trying to. Recruit one, it's been a long, long process, we had uh the Flynn Restaurant Group that was looking at doing it, they spent. Over a hundred thousand dollars on planning and preparation. And last May, they decided not to do it and they walked away. Um, I reached out to the owners of LV Petroleum. Who has done the the Kentucky Fried Chicken and the Charlie's Cheese. And they were very interested, we offered them the same incentive package that we offered Flynn Restaurant Group and they accepted it. With the modification of rather than getting any kind of incentives, they just wanted to do a land trade. So uh we have worked out that agreement, we approved it back in June, I believe it was. Uh, June or July, we approved that agreement as a council and the time for the due diligence has expired. And after the due diligence portion, they are requesting to have an amendment onto that sales agreement. And the amendment only changes one thing, which is that rather than the clock starting on the closing date. Because they have two years exactly to open their doors from the closing date in our original agreement. But what they're requesting is rather than it being from the closing date, that it would be from the date that they get their final approval for the building permit. So if there are any delays from the city, we're not holding them up or causing them any kind of a delay, so they're asking for the final building permits. Um, to be the start of the clock for the two-year timeframe, so that is the agreement, um. Lance, did you want to speak on that at all?
Well, I I. No, I mean, that outlines what the change would be from the original agreement, so it basically starts their clock a little later potentially. They just don't want to be waiting and having that time clock start uh prior to them being able to even proceed with building or development of the land. The. Uh, I guess the. I guess largely, that's the only thing I saw with it, I didn't see anything of substance, really just that piece and making sure that they can move forward. And that their clock's not starting until they get their building permits. Uh, the only, the only other piece that I I wanted to uh make aware is that I believe that. Once we've completed our part of approval of those permits, that we also notify them that. In our mind, in writing, that the clock is now starting, so that it's clear in writing when that started.
And this mainly deals with, because we have a final plan review company for, you know, extensive plan review like this, Safe Bill. So once Safe Bill gets involved in this, it may take one or two back and forth, but it won't be a long process, but. You know, a couple of weeks could be a couple of weeks, so, yeah. They started that process? Uh, would they? We're waiting for the digital copies from the. Digital copies. Uh, architects and engineers, uh once we get the digital copies, we can send it to Safe Bill. Safe Bill will do their review and then once it's approved, then we would issue the bill. Am I right? I think that's correct, is that right, Emery?
We have a correction too in the second.
Somewhere in there.
A correction in the second, or under recital. It says uh property situated in Prowers County, Colorado, Chandler, Arizona.
Oh, we got the wrong, wrong city.
Yeah.
Yeah. On mine. That was theirs. That's theirs. I was looking for it, or?
Yeah. Did you find it in the second?
Okay, I see what you're saying again.
Yep.
Okay.
Good observation.
Okay. So we'll have that modification. All right, any other questions on this? Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make that motion. Motion to approve the amendment to align the project start time in the PSI PSA for KB Widdham. Propco LLC with the amended change under the recitals paragraph for. Prowers County, Colorado, Chandler, Arizona to Lamar, Colorado. And for proper notice to be sent when the city is ready to go forward.
Very good, good motion.
Thanks, Mike.
Second. We have a motion in a second, as stated.
I'm sorry, who made the second, thank you.
We have a motion in a second, as stated, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same side.
Unanimous in favor, Al?
Before we move on, um just so you know, I did speak with Jeanette, um. With LV Petroleum, they believe that they will have, we've been working and we have set the closing date for this property to be on October the twentieth. So we'll have a closing of this contract on October the twentieth. Um, in the discussions with her this morning, she believes that she may even have the digital copies to us for the design work by October the twentieth as well. So we can be in this process and hopefully have it turned around by the end of the month, so they can get to work on it sooner. But as far as the closing date, we are already set that for October the twentieth. Okay. Good news. And all right, with that said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an ordinance to levy and collect taxes. In the city of Lamar, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four.
So this is our first reading of the set of the mill levy ordinance to set the mill levy. Um, it has been set at thirteen point two three nine mils upon each dollar of the total valuation for assessment of all taxable property. Within the city for the year twenty twenty-three, um if approved, this will be the thirty-sixth consecutive year that the city has operated without a. Property tax mill levy increase. Uh, with a mill levy of thirteen point two three nine mils, the city will collect four hundred. Um, four hundred ninety-seven thousand forty-three dollars in twenty twenty-four. This represents an increase of approximately three percent from four hundred and eighty-four thousand four thirty in twenty twenty-three. Um, it is my recommendation that we pass the ordinance on the first reading, um and this does have to be read out loud.
Okay.
And I can do that if you.
Either way, I can, whatever you want. Is there an ordinance number on?
Um, we will sign it or ordinance uh number after the first reading, um we, then it will be on there for the second reading.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Uh, this is an ordinance to levy and collect taxes of the city of Lamar, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. Being ordained by the city council of the city of Lamar, Colorado. Section one, that the purpose of the meeting and all general operating expenses of the city of Lamar during twenty twenty-four. Budget year, there is hereby levying a tax of twelve point two three nine mils.
Thirteen.
There thirteen, sorry, thirteen point two three nine mils. Upon each dollar of the valuation for assessment of all taxable property within the city of Lamar for the year twenty twenty-three. Section two, that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to immediately certify that the county commissioners. Of Prowers County, Colorado, the mill levy for the city of Lamar as herein above determined and set. This would be introduced, read in full, passed on the first reading and ordered published this ninth day of October of twenty twenty-three. Make a motion, pass ordinance on first reading.
Second.
The motion to the second to pass it on the first reading, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same.
Unanimous in favor, Al?
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is. An ordinance providing for the appropriation of revenues and expenditures and adopting budget for the city of Lamar, Colorado. For the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four.
So in section eleven six, the city, uh Lamar City Charter states that not less than thirty days prior to the first day of the next fiscal year. Council shall adopt an ordinance for the budget and an ordinance for the annual appropriation. The attached ordinance provides for the formal adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget as. And authorizes revenue and expenditure levels for the ensuing fiscal year. Um, it is my recommendation that we pass the ordinance, that you pass the ordinance on the first reading.
So we need to do the first reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you like to do this one?
It's up to you.
Go ahead.
Okay, an ordinance providing for the appropriation of revenues and expenditures and adopting the budget for the city of Lamar, Colorado. For the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, being ordained by the city council of the city of Lamar, Colorado. Section one, the various appropriations from the revenue of the city of Lamar, Colorado to defray the expenses and liabilities. Thereof during the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, shall be under the following heads. General Fund E nine one one fund, Sales Tax Fund, Conservation Trust Fund, Unemployment Fund. Victims Assistance Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Lamar Building Finance Corp. Lamar Library Fund, Fairmount Investment Fund, Sanitation Fund, Water and Sewer Fund. Lamar Ambulance Fund and Airport Fund. The following amounts under the respective funds are hereby appropriated out of the revenue. That shall accrue to the said city during fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. General Fund eleven million eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, E nine one one, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand three ninety-three. Sales Tax Fund five thousand one hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred. Conservation Trust Fund one hundred and thirty thousand, Unemployment Fund ten thousand, Victims Assistance Fund fifteen thousand two fifty. Capital Improvement Fund three million three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen, Lamar Building Finance Corp, one hundred thousand. Library Fund thirty-five thousand eight hundred, Fairmount Investment Fund forty thousand eight hundred. Sanitation Fund two million three hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-six. Water and Sewer Fund eight million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. Lamar Ambulance Fund six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three ninety-four. Airport Fund three million eight hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. The section, section three, the budget as followed is hereby adopted for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. General Fund Revenue eleven thousand, eleven million eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. Expenditures eleven million eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. Revenues over and under zero, total appropriation for the General Fund eleven million eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. E nine one, E nine one one fund, revenue seven hundred and fifty-one thousand seven ninety-two. Expenditure seven hundred and fifty, seven, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand seven ninety-two. Revenues over and under expenditure zero, total appropriation for the E nine one one fund is seven hundred and fifty-one thousand seven ninety-two. Sales Tax Fund, revenues five million one hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred. Expenditures five, five million one hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred. Revenues over and under zero, total appropriation for the Sales Tax Fund, five million one hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred. Conservation Trust Fund, revenues a hundred and thirty thousand, expenditures a hundred and thirty thousand, total appropriation. For the Conservation Trust, a hundred and thirty thousand. Unemployment Fund, revenues ten thousand, expenditures ten thousand, total appropriation for the Unemployment Fund, ten thousand dollars. Victims Assistance Fund, revenues including fund balance used fifteen thousand two fifty. Expenditures fifteen thousand two fifty, revenues over and under for expenditures is zero. Total appropriation for the Victims Assistance Fund fifteen thousand two fifty. Capital Improvement Fund, revenues including fund balance used, three million three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen. Expenditures three million three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen. Revenues over and under zero, total appropriation for the Capital Improvement Fund, three million three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen. Lamar Building Finance Corp, operating revenue a hundred thousand, operating expenditures a hundred thousand, net income loss, zero. Library Fund Revenues thirty-seven thousand, expenditures thirty-five thousand eight hundred. Revenues over and under would be twelve thousand over appropriation, total appropriation for the Library Fund, thirty-seven thousand.
That was twelve hundred.
Excuse me?
Twelve hundred, over under?
Twelve hundred, did I say twelve thousand? Sorry, thank you. Fairmount. Fairmount Investment Fund, revenues including fund balance forty thousand eight hundred. Expenditures forty thousand eight hundred, revenues over and under zero, total appropriation for Fairmount Investment Fund, forty thousand eight hundred. Airport Fund Operating Revenue six hundred and sixty-five thousand, operating expenditures eight hundred and thirty-two thousand four thirty-four. Net, net operating loss of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four thirty-four. Non-operating revenue, oh, I dropped a digit. I dropped a digit. It's supposed to be three million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. Non-operating expenditures, three million ten thousand three hundred and eighteen. For net, net non-operating income of sixty-seven thousand four thirty-four. Um, net income and um income or loss is zero, so that will be need to be accepted with the correction. Sanitation Fund, operating revenues one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred. Operating expenditures, one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand one thirty-six. Net operating income, three hundred and twenty-five thousand nine sixty-four. Non-operating revenue, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand two thirty-six. Non-operating expenditures, one million thirteen thousand two hundred. Net, non-operating income of a loss of three twenty-five nine sixty-four, the net income loss overall is zero. The Water and Sewer Fund, operating revenue, three million three hundred and eleven thousand five hundred, operating expenditures. Two million eight thousand forty-four dollars, net operating income, one million three hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty-six. Non-operating revenue of five million six hundred and fifty-five thousand two sixty-eight, non-operating expenditures, six million nine hundred and fifty. Eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four, net non-operating income is a loss of one million three hundred and three thousand four fifty-six. The overall net income and loss is zero. Lamar Ambulance Fund, revenues including fund balance used, six hundred and forty thousand seven hundred. Expenditure six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three ninety-four, revenues over and under of eleven thousand three hundred and six. There is hereby pursuant to Article eleven of the Charter of Said City of Lamar, Colorado, appropriated from the revenue of the utilities. Boarded the sum of one million six hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars. Introduced, read in full, passed on first reading and ordered published this ninth day of October, twenty twenty-three. With the correction of three million.
So we would need a motion to pass the ordinance on first reading. With the correction of the Airport Fund, non-operating revenue to be three million one seventy-seven, seven fifty-two. It's okay, no, that follows. You're good.
And I'll fix the total.
Okay. So I've read the motion that was needed.
I make the motion with the correction, so moved.
One second, yeah, so I have a motion in a second, as stated earlier.
One second. Is the net non, non-operating income supposed to be one hundred and sixty-seven?
Yeah, they just pointed that out, that's why you don't fix the total.
It'll follow once you put the three in there.
Okay, so with both of those, then.
Corrections, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same side.
Unanimous in favor, Al?
Hey. Lots of ordinances here tonight, next item on the agenda, the ordinance to accept and dedicate real property for use as an alleyway. We need to approve the ordinance on first reading, oh, you're not Stephanie?
I'm not. She's, she's um at a awesome conference uh right now, so she asked me to step in on her behalf. Uh, as you remember, uh last time, um. The Duns, Elsie, um uh did a quick claim, we'd give uh twenty feet of property in between seventeen-ten. And seventeen oh eight, uh south. and seventeen oh eight, uh, South Ninth through the city, so that could be used as an alleyway. Uh, and this is just the ordinance, um, to make that happen. You'd like me to read it?
That's been great.
And. Um, an ordinance to accept and dedicate real property for use as an alley, whereas the city council for the city of Lamar, Colorado, a home rule municipal charter here and after referred to as the city is the governing body for the city of Lamar and whereas the Elsie Dunn has offered to convey to the city a parcel of property approximately twenty by eighty three feet for purposes of creating an alley. And whereas the city, uh, council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of the city to accept the parcel of property for use as an alley. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council for the city of Lamar, Colorado. Section one, acceptance and dedication, a real property for use as an alley. The city council hereby authorize, authorizes acceptance by the city by deed or other acceptable means of conveyance, the following described parcel of real property. The tract of land located in Lot Eight of Fairview Addition and being more particularly described as the follows. As follows, tract one, the south twenty feet of the north eighty three feet of Lot Eight in Block Three, Fairview Addition to the city of Lamar. According to the reported plat thereof, county of Prowers, state of Colorado, also known as seventeen ten, South Ninth Street, Lamar, Colorado, eight one zero five two. Section two, dedication of street and adoption of street system. Upon receipt of the instrument of conveyance, the city council authorizes the city to take such action as is necessary for preparing and recording such plat, map or other instrument as is necessary to include the acquired property in the official map of the city of Lamar. Section three, validity. If any of the parts of this ordinance are for any reason held to be invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. The city hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance and each part or parts thereof irrespective of the fact that any parts, part or parts be declared invalid. Section four, repeal. Existing or parts of ordinances covering the same matters as embraced in this ordinance are hereby repealed and all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, except that this repeal shall not affect or prevent the pros- prosecution or punishment of any person for any act done or committed in violation of any ordinance hereby repealed prior to the taking effect of this ordinance. Section five, let the effective date, this ordinance shall take effect thirty days after publication. In addition to including the ordinance in the city's book of ordinances, the city clerk shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded in the office of the Prowers County Clerk and Recorder upon ordinance taking effect. Section six, separability. If any section, paragraph, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be held invalid, unenforceable or of no legal effect by a court of competent jurisdiction, the invalidity of such section, paragraph or clause shall not affect any other provision of this ordinance.
Not sure if it matters, just the spell here. One second. Can they, it reads to Covey to the city. She can convey. And again, not sure if it's Elsie Dunn or Citizen Elsie Dunn or Property Owner Elsie Dunn would be more correct.
I would say that you'd want to correct that. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion with this, the corrections?
Someone will make a motion with the corrections.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For the motion and the second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Eye. Oppose, same side.
You can add this in favor of.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an ordinance to accept and dedicate real property for use of the municipal streets. And this is also initiated by Anne Marie and Stephanie Strub.
Right, Strube.
Strube.
Yes. Um, so get in your wayback machine. And let's talk about February twenty eighth nineteen seventy nine, all of Clifton Street and Forest Park, Park Place subdivision and all of that part of Fifth Street extending from the south line of Clifton Street. The north city limits was vacated by ordinance seven thirty three. Later Sword Street was added with the construction of the Scooter's Coffee. Sword Street runs east from Highway two eighty seven to the west and dead ends just to the north of Fifth Street. Um, TJ Sanders is the current property owner of the property that is needed to connect the Fifth Street to Sword Street together. And TJ has agreed to donate the property and that is needed to tie those two together and you have um, accepted that in a quick claim in previous council meeting. So would you like me to?
I'll do this one.
Okay.
An ordinance to accept and dedicate real property for use as a municipal street, whereas the city council for the city of Lamar, Colorado, a home rule municipal charter here and after referred to as the city is the governing body for the city of Lamar. And whereas on or about March twelfth nineteen seventy nine, the city council by ordinance seven thirty three did vacate Fifth Street from the south line of Clifton Street to the north city limits. And whereas the Terry J Sanders has offered to convey, let me do that one too, convey to the city a parcel of property approximately seventy five feet for purposes of extending Fifth Street and connecting Fifth Street to Sword Street. And whereas the city council desires to initiate and proceed with including the extended Fifth Street in the city's street system and be reflected on the city's total mileage and arterial arterial mileage registered, registered with the Colorado Department of Transportation pursuant to the provisions of CRS forty three dash two dash one twenty four at SEC. And whereas the additions to or confirmations of total mileage and arterial mileage changes for the city's street system must comply with the provisions of CRS forty three dash two dash one twenty five. Subsection two.
Yeah.
And whereas the city council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of the city to accept the parcel of property for use as a municipal street and for such change to reflect, be reflected on the city's street system. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lamar, Colorado. Section one, acceptance and dedication of real property for use as a municipal street. The city council hereby authorizes acceptance by the city by deed or other acceptable means of conveyance. The following described parcel of real property. Beginning at the southwest corner of track four A in the amended subdivision plat of amended plat of the Maxwell subdivision of lots fifteen through twenty, lots twenty two through twenty seven, lots twenty nine through thirty four, being lot twenty two Forest Park Place subdivision and part of lot twenty one, Forest Park Place subdivision. City of Lamar, Prowers County, Colorado, as recorded at reception number five four six one nine four. Map cab, C map number seven seven one in the Prowers County Courthouse. Said point also being a found aluminum cap, P dot L dot S two six nine seven eight. And the true point of beginning of the said tract of land as hereafter described. Then south, two degrees, three feet, thirty five inches east. Twenty five feet along the west line of track seven of said amended subdivision plat. Then south, two degrees, four feet, thirty one inches east, twenty five feet along the west line of track eight of said amended subdivision plat. Then south, two degrees, four feet, thirty one inches east, twenty five point oh one feet to intersect the south line of vacated Clifton Street and ordinance number seven thirty three. Said point also being found bent number three rebar. Then south eighty seven degrees, fifty four feet, forty two inches west. Fifty nine point nine six feet to intersect the west line of Fifth Street, said point also being a found bent aluminum cap. P dot L dot S three hundred eight seven. Then north, two degrees, four feet, thirty one feet west, fifty feet along the west line of said vacated Fifth Street. Then north, two degrees, three feet, thirty five inches west, twenty five feet along the west line of said line of said vacated Fifth Street. Then north eighty seven degrees, fifty four feet, forty two inches east, fifty nine point nine six feet to the point of beginning. Said tract of land contains point one zero three acres more or less. Bearings for this description are based upon the city of Lamar GPS master control to show the bearing between the southeast corner of track six and the southwest corner of track four A to bear south, two degrees, three feet, thirty five inches east. In the county of Prowers, state of Colorado, as shown by the land survey plant attached as exhibit A. Section two, dedication of street and adoption to street system. Upon receipt of the instrument of conveyance, the city council authorizes the city to take such action as is necessary in accordance with CRS forty three dash two dash one two four and forty three dash two dash one two five. To include the acquired property in the city's system of streets, designating the name or number of the street so as to conform to the city's system of streets and preparing and recording such plat, map or other instrument as is necessary to include the acquired property in the official map of the city of Lamar. Section three, validity. If any part of, if any part or I think I should say or parts of this ordinance are for any reason held to be invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. The city hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance and each part or parts thereof irrespective of the fact that any part or parts be declared invalid. Section four, repeal. Existing or parts of ordinances covering the same matters as embraced in this ordinance are hereby repealed and all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, except that this repeal shall not affect or prevent the prosecution or punishment of any person for any act done or committed in violation of any ordinance hereby repealed prior to the taking effect of this ordinance. Section five, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect thirty days after publication. In addition to including the ordinance in the city's book of ordinances, the city clerk shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded in the office of the Prowers County Clerk and Recorder upon the ordinance taking effect. Section six, separability. If any section, paragraph, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be held invalid, unenforceable or of no legal effect by a court of competent jurisdiction, jurisdiction. The invalidity of such section, paragraph or clause shall not be affected any other provision of this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for reading through that and thank you for those who are watching and or didn't understand what was happening, but we have to go through this in first reading as well as second reading, so. Um, what is the council's pleasure on that? First reading. I have a motion.
I make a motion with, I believe there were some typos, you need to correct it.
Read typos?
Yeah.
So you have a motion.
The removal of Dunn in the third paragraph, obey and or, or in section three.
Thanks for catching us on that.
Yeah, so we have a motion to approve with the three corrections as stated by Linda. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Oppose, same sign.
You can add this in favor of.
Okay. That leaves us with the last item on the agenda, which is miscellaneous items to be, have any miscellaneous items? Anyone?
I have one miscellaneous item.
Go ahead.
I noticed just today that there's a remembrance for Beverly Augustine at the Big Timbers Museum Thursday, October the nineteenth at seven PM.
At seven PM?
Yes, sir, I guess they're gonna have a few speakers, I think it was maybe three speakers there. They're gonna speak on her behalf, one will be her daughter.
Okay.
All right. I'd also like to point out that, uh, Zonta will be hosting a nonpartisan, uh, forum for candidates on October seventeenth and I believe it's six.
At six PM?
Six PM and that will be at the college auditorium.
Thank you. All right, sounds good. Uh, the only other thing is, uh, we have a request to be on, be on the morning tomorrow morning. We would like to do that. Before anything goes. Mike, did you want to or?
I will.
If somebody else? Anybody else?
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning or you busy?
No can do.
No, well, I can go there tomorrow for the first time and help if you want. Or Jerry, you can.
Yeah.
I was like.
So we'll plan for.
Six PM in the large lecture hall in the, in the Bowman Building at the college on October seventeenth. That is the nonpartisan Zonta candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Everybody willing to join me or is everybody busy?
I was gonna do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so our next council meeting is on Monday, October the twenty third at seven PM. With nothing else to go, we have a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
I've always seen it.
You can add this in favor of.
Thank you for joining us.